Good evening, we're going to be closing the closed meeting. We get a motion and let the closed meeting be closed and the Board certifies, to the best of its nearest knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting to which the certification applies, and only such business matters as were identified in the motion concerning the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered. We have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend the personnel agenda.
Okay. Mr. Honeycutt, we'll get you that. Do we have a motion to close the closed meeting?
So, move.
We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdifin?
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Honeycutt, you have the floor.
Yes, and I'm sorry, I spoke out of turn. I'd like to make an amendment to the personnel agenda, adding items for personnel 2016-100, 2016-101, and 2016-102.
We have a motion for Mr. Honeycutt to amend the personnel agenda to include items 2016-100, 2016-101, 2016-102. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second for Ms. Garner. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdifin?
Yes.
At this time, we're going to stand for a pleasure of legends and a moment of silence.
Pledge of legends, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. First of all, in recognitions tonight, a very different night because of the weather that we have, so some of our typical recognitions or what we had scheduled will not be taken care of. The seniors of the month will be postponed until this month and next month for the next one. But we do want to let the members of the Board know how much we appreciate you during this, which is School Board Appreciation Month, and so you will find at your desks both a document from the Commonwealth of Virginia, as well as a gift from the staff here, and I'm going to ask Ms. Majet if she would say something about that.
Good evening, Board Chair, Mrs. Sturdifin.
Vice Chair Garner, Board Members, and Superintendent Nichols. The month of February marks the annual observance of the School Board Appreciation Month, a good time to salute the work of School Board members and celebrate public education. Our elected school board in Mecklenburg County speaks out for our school division by ensuring that our students have the opportunity to benefit from a high-quality education. As Mr. Nichols stated, in front of you there is a small token of our appreciation for your countless hours leading and supporting our school division, and I also have a certificate for each of you, as well from the Virginia School Board Association, and I'll read it and then I'll pass these out, "An appreciation of your dedication and service to excellence in education on behalf of the Commonwealth, students of the Commonwealth of Virginia. School Board Appreciation Month, February 2016."
I'll have to pass this out. Chair, Mrs. Sturdifin. Mr. Palmer?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Thank you.
Mr. Honeycutt? Mr. Palmer?
Thank you.
Mr. Ritchie?
I've got to figure this thing out.
And again, we just wanted to say thank you for all that you do for our school division.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, beyond that, moving on to my report and some informational items. In February, we always have Ms. Kristy Pfeffer, who is our Director of Exceptional Programs, give to you the Special Education Report, the annual plan, so that it may be voted on at the March meeting. Due to weather conditions tonight, she's not in a position to be here to present this plan herself, but as we have gotten in touch with her, all of you have been emailed a copy of the plan, and we'll be in a position to look it over and ask any questions that you have, because we still want to make sure that this plan is in a position to be voted on in March. So, that will take care of the first one that we have. The second one, which I brought to your attention last month, is the calendar update. There is a copy of the proposed calendar template, and we are, we had recommended last month that we accept the pre-Labor Day calendar for you to vote on, and when we get down to the voting items, we will be asking, I will be recommending that you take the recommendation for this calendar to be advised, revised, and put in place for next year. But if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any questions that may come up at this point.
You're trying to do 180 days. This is 179.
Our goal was to get to 180 days, but as we worked back and forth with members of the teaching community, which we respect highly, there was one particular item that they asked for, which was that they have all of Wednesday, not just half a day on the Wednesday for Thanksgiving. So in order to be able to give them that option, we are going to be cutting it back to 179, and then in another year, we'll be looking for the following year to get back to 180 calendar days.
Will the hours be the same as they are now? They added extra 20 minutes, I think, to make up for snow days or something.
We do add time in, because as the state works with us now on this information, they don't count whole days, they count components of days, and so we build extra time in. Now, another thing that I'm going to ask that you be considering for next year, and this has come as a recommendation from the schools, as I have talked with teachers in the schools, but it's also coming as a recommendation from the students, because, and that is the issue of not the calendar year, but the time that we have in the day. Right now, we're on what is known as a modified four-by-four block schedule, which means that there are three 90-minute blocks, and then a fourth block at the high schools that is a half of a block, and that's over the full year. So that one class is all year long rather than just a semester, and the time that we take out of that is given to the teachers for planning together, and so the students are only getting credit for seven classes as opposed to eight, which the traditional four-by-four block schedule gives them. I'm asking that as we vote next time, as we have this meeting next time, that we would have all of the information and polls from all the teachers and whatnot, but there is a recommendation I will make that we move to a full four-by-four block at the high schools next year, which will give the students the opportunity to earn eight credits as we're looking for more career and technical opportunities, as well as programs that are there, and we will have the month for you to do any investigations and questions that you have for that. That would have some impact on the timing of the day. All I'm asking right now is, when we get to this vote, will be the pre-Labor Day start with the first semester and second semester, the first semester's ending before Christmas.
Okay.
And you teachers would come back when, with the pre-Labor Day?
That's on the calendar that's listed.
Okay.
On here. They always come back a week earlier than regular.
I see it, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for Superintendent. Have we checked with our community college to see when their graduation day will be in May of 2000?
Of this, I'm sorry.
Not this year. On this calendar, our graduation is listed for May 20th, which is a Saturday, at both high schools. So, we want to make sure that we don't conflict with the community college graduation date. Typically, we do have students who participate in both, and also, just to check and make sure that colleges too, most of the state colleges will graduate Mother's Day weekend, which looks like it might be maybe the 14th, and then the week after Mother's Day, just so we can make accommodations for families who might be experiencing graduation headaches. So, I like the calendar and all that, I just, it would be nice to, in future, when we're planning future calendars, or maybe even this one, just to keep those conflicts in mind.
I can, I can answer you that, to my knowledge, on the calendar committee, no one asked anyone at the community college or at other colleges this year, but that's been based on past experiences where the colleges and the community colleges have always had graduation earlier in May than we're looking at for this year. But I will take your request and advisement so that we can check on that in future years.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It should be the, it's usually the Saturday closest to the 15th of May, and usually before, so it should be the 14th of May, because contracts are, all faculty contracts go through the 15th of May. So I'm sure it was positive to be the 14th of May.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Thank you, Mr. Ritchie.
I would also like to bring it back to the attention of the public, as well as to the Board, that this Board has assigned committees for taking action on a variety of issues, and we have placed in the Board docs a list of the persons who serve on each of those committees, as well as members of central office, senior staff, that will work with those committees with questions that might be asked, and we will begin tonight, actually going through and giving the Chairman of each of the committees an opportunity to update us on what actions have been taken as they've met. Two of these committees, the Finance and the Education Committee, that is joint with the Board of Supervisors, are public, because we have more than three members of the Board on them, and those will all be announced. The rest of them have two members, and so they would not need to be public as we move I'd also like to point out that we would, at this point, typically be in a position of presenting to this Board samples of proposed budgets for next year. With the capital improvement projects that we're looking at, and with a number of other items that have come up and to our attention, we are not in a position at this point to be able to bring budget recommendations, but we will be working on that more thoroughly, and I will be having conversation with Mr. Carter at the, at the Board of Supervisors and the county clerk to talk with them about the schedule. Typically, we would present our recommendations, having had public hearing, to the Board at their March meeting. It's due to them on April the 1st, and we will fully comply with those recommendations, but we do need, as it's a new Board, and as it's a new Superintendent, and as there are several persons that are in staff that are relatively new, we have some more work that needs to be done, and so we're going to be getting back with you and setting dates for those meetings.
Thank you. Another item that we have here, and at the December meeting, there was a request for an audit of certain books, and we'd like to get an update on that, and since this has come up, I haven't had a chance to actually speak to Ms. Garner, but she's here, do you would give us an update on the audit request?
The thing I've run into with the audit request is, according to the CPAs and our societies, this is not considered an audit. What they are asking for is agreed-upon procedures, and when you contract someone to do agreed-upon procedures, you have to specifically state everything that you want them to do. In this case, Mr. Purrier asked that from four different areas, that we have some, will look at every transaction in those areas. So right now, I am trying to figure out how to accumulate that information into a form that is fair to send out to everybody and get it proposed. Angela Bacon, my AP person, is right now dealing with RDA, who is my computer software person, to see if there's any way we can pull these transaction numbers rather than printing reports and going through and counting. It's just a big, I've talked to several other auditors, I've talked to other firms, and everybody is upon agreement that to be fair, I need to be able to give them a number of transactions per department, a dollar number per department, and number of checks. And so that's what I'm working on, so that I can write the RFP. That's where we are.
Question.
Yes, sir.
When we did this years past, we called it a limited scope audit, and we directed, we directed the accountant to go into certain areas and actually look at those areas in depth. One year, we, and this is from an older school board, but I'm an older guy, I've been here a long time, and we would actually like to look at transportation one year, we would look at federal funds in depth one year, and so I think, I think it's, we're just getting a little more depth than limited scope audit. I think we want to look at a lot of different areas in depth, so.
We do, and it probably could be called a limited scope, but when I, when I give three different auditors an RFP, I've got to be able to give them something comparable for them to be able to give me a bid on what it's going to cost. That's what I'm trying to do right now. It probably is about the same thing that you're talking about, Mr. Edwards, it's just on a much larger scope, because we're talking four full departments and one object code for four whole years, looking at every transaction. That's, that's a lot of looking.
Right.
So anyway.
So we don't have any idea when, when we hit this?
Well, if I can't get something out of RDA within the next day or two, we're going to start manually counting transactions and get something out there. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, item F, is a document that is in your Board docs related to a request for, from several of our bus drivers for back pay from back last summer, and we have been able to get from Mr. Mayhew a complete spreadsheet of each of those drivers and what was owed month by month, and I will be asking that you approve that item later when, as we take votes.
Okay, thank you.
We will not have the student liaison report tonight because of the weather, under Superintendent's comments. There's a couple of items that I'd like as well to bring to your attention. One is, as you know, we're working on the capital improvement project with the Education Committee of the Board of Supervisors. There is an architectural update from the time that the architects actually came to Bluestone High School, Bluestone Middle School, Parkview High School, and Parkview Middle School. He sent a report that I've got listed here. I spent all of one day with them. They went the next day and found very much the same thing. They will be taking this information and making it a part of their overall recommendations of cost to the joint committees when that time comes. One of the things that I would like to make public tonight is the fact that the architectural firm has put online the process of having input from the community, the survey that would be done, and we have publicized that survey on our website. We have also asked for written copies, which they have brought and made available, and we will be placing the written copies in each of the schools this week, so that those who might be uncomfortable looking online could actually go to the schools and pick up a copy. I know that the Board of Supervisors is also working on making these surveys available. We feel like it's very important to get as much input from the community as we can, and thus far, we haven't gotten a very strong comeback from the surveys online, so I do want to bring it to attention, so we can ask for that again. And then the other item that I'm, I ask, putting under my comments, is that in the past, there was a policy that made available to our staff persons, teachers and others, for shared leave for sick days, and there may have been some abuses of that at that point, but it was taken away as an option from the teachers and for staff to be able to use, and in comments that I've gotten from the teachers, again, several of them have said, "This would really be helpful and beneficial to us if we were to put this policy back in place." And so I've put a copy of the policy on the Board docs for you to be able to look at, and next month, I'll be asking that you come back and take a vote on whether to restore this to our staff or not. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but of course, you can ask through the month on that.
It, I know that it was, it was abused at one time, but it's very beneficial when we have employees that have, they have sickness that lasts a long time, it becomes a financial burden on them, and a lot of these teachers that, that bank their hours and keep, have a lot of hours, it's a, it's a gift to be able to give somebody 20 days or 30 days so that they don't go without pay until they get well and come back. A lot of people have cancer, have other problems, so it's just something we really need to take a hard look at. I think it's the humane thing to do.
I believe it can certainly be done and eliminate the issues that could, were abusive in former days.
I had 130 days when I retired, and at one time, we could do it, and I gave days away, and I'd rather give days to other teachers than to just lose them the way I did, and I feel like other teachers, same, would go along with that too.
And that's all my comments tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. We're going to continue on the chairman remarks. The remarks I have is, I look around and thankful to people that came out in the bad weather. Appreciate the sheriff coming out, it's good to see you, Sheriff. The committees that we've put in place has been doing a really good job. I think with the committees, it will streamline our process, it was, help us gather all the information prior to the meetings. That way, once we come into the meeting, we can do the Board's business and continue on. And then we'll continue on with the first committee report, is the Joint Education Committee/Capital Improvement Committee. There are two chairs in that committee. We're going to go with the Capital Improvement Chair, Mr. Palmer, and the Joint Education Committee Chairman is right here to my left, Mr. Edwards, but today it's going to be Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We met this afternoon, Mrs. Bailey and I, at 2:30. We went over a variety of information, or a lot of information, that we have gathered from schools. We have gone to every school in the county. We have compiled a list of things that they need, and we have gone as far as, we've gone around and took pictures of, of the different things that they said that they would need, case in point is air conditioning gym or roof leaks. But right now, we're not at a point of presenting that to you all, because we need to go back and do some final touches, as well as get in touch with the county, per se, the school system, and see what we can do in-house, as opposed to having to go outside. We do not feel, and Ms. Bailey to jump in at any point here, we do not feel that everything that was given to us has to go outside. We want to save any way that we can. So as a result, we need to table this until the next meeting, and hopefully by that time, we would have gotten a chance to meet with people to see what we can do inside as opposed to going outside.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Mr. Edwards, did you have anything on behalf of Joint Education Committee?
Very quickly, we had a meeting with the Board of Supervisors, and Mrs. Lundey, she's Chairman of the Joint Education Committee from the Board of Supervisors. We decided to do, as the architect that suggested, it's the first phase of what we're doing, we did get together a steering committee made up of 24 business people, educators, law enforcement officers, people that really have an interest in what happens to our children in this county, and what we need in our buildings and our facilities. And those 24 people will be meeting, and will, the meetings will be set up around the county with the architects to talk to the people, find out what they want. This, this project is to find out what the people in Mecklenburg County want, it's their money, and it's their children, and it's their, they're the citizens, they need to tell us what they want, what they need, and then we'll know how to move forward. Mrs. Lundey, because the steering committee has so many people, Mrs. Lundey has agreed to be the Chair of the Steering Committee, so she will be setting the meeting dates. Right now, we have a meeting date on the 25th of February at 6:00 PM, and the meeting time is for two hours. The two committees will come back together again with the Steering Committee, and we will be moving forward with more information on what we'll be doing in the future. So that's all we have.
And Mr. Edwards, if I might, there is a copy of, a list of the committee members in the public documents.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer, Mr. Edwards. Next is item B, Finance Committee, which is chaired by Ms. Bailey.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee met today at 4 o'clock, and we reviewed the bills that are listed in your Board docs, and I'd encourage every School Board member to go over those bills individually. If you do have questions about those, if you would contact me with your questions. We have planned to meet the Fridays before our Monday meetings. Of course, we couldn't do that this week, Mr. Nichols was out of town, and so we did that today, and we did advertise that change, but you can count on the Finance Committee meeting on Fridays, late afternoon, so if you can get your questions to me before Friday, and I can bring them to the committee. But today, we did answer many questions, and they were answered to our satisfaction, and it is the committee's recommendation that you would vote to approve the bills for payment this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Next item, item C, Gifted and Talented Special Education Health and Family Committee. That's with Mr. Ritchie, Ms. Garner. Do you have anything for us tonight?
No, they met February 10th while I was in Richmond, and Mr. Ritchie did not know because they had not added his name to the list.
All right.
These committees are new. They're not even on the list yet.
We'll get there. Item D, is going to be the CTE Career and Technical Education Committee, that's Mr. Ritchie and Mr. Campbell. Do you have anything tonight?
We, Mr. Campbell and I attended the expo at the senior high school, and we saw some other Board members that are just trying to familiarize ourselves with the CTE programs that I currently have at the high schools, and then we're going to schedule, or hopefully we're hiring a CTE coordinator soon, and we'll schedule a meeting with that person once they get on board, and see what their wants and desires are and move from there.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Ritchie, Mr. Campbell. Okay. E, Athletics Discipline Committee. Myself and Mr. Palmer are on that committee. Mr. Palmer, you have anything with that tonight?
Nothing anymore than, or no more than the fact that we have gone to several of the games, and we commend the teams, because we have in Mecklenburg County some outstanding ball players, and we commend them, and going to follow them as far as they go, hopefully to the state.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Item Y, Public Input. Ma'am clerk, do we have anyone signed up?
No.
Thank you. We'll move on to action items. Action item 10A, do you have a motion to approve audits from the Special Meeting held January 7, 2016?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion for Mr. Edwards and a second for Mr. Honeycutt. Call for the question. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Abstain.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturdifin?
Yes. Thank you, Board. Action item 10B, have a motion to approve the audits from the Special Meeting held January 8, 2016.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for Mr. Edwards. We have a second for Mr. Campbell. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honey- Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Abstain.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturtifin?
Yes. Thank you, Board. Action item C, Minutes from regular meeting held January 19, 2016.
I make a motion that we vote on the regular meeting.
We have a motion from Ms. Bailey, we have a second. We have a second from Mr. Edwards. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturtifin?
Yes. Action item D, do you have a motion to approve the bills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the bills.
We have a motion from Ms. Bailey, we have a second. We have a second from Mr. Honeycutt. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturtifin?
Yes. Action item E, do you have a motion to approve the amended personnel action items by Mr. Honeycutt?
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Honeycutt, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Campbell. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturtifin?
Yes. Action item F, do you have a motion to approve the bus driver back pay?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Mr. Edwards. We have a second from Mr. Campbell?
Elizabeth Honeycutt.
Or Mr. Honeycutt. Roll call.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturtifin?
Yes. Item G, do you have a motion to approve the calendar as recommended by the superintendent?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board approves the 2016-17 calendar.
We have a motion from Ms. Bailey.
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Donna Garner. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Sturtifin?
Yes. That was Door Garner, not Donna Garner. Under reminders, under March, we have a list, March 14, Teacher Work Day, March 16, Parent-Teacher Conference at the elementary school, March 17, Parent-Teacher Conference at the middle school, March 21, Regular School Board Meeting, March 25, Professional Development Day, March 1 through April, March 28 through April 1, the spring holiday break. At this time, we're going to have an opportunity for board members to make their remarks. Ms. Bailey?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm going to take some time tonight, because I didn't do this last month.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. As we develop our mission and vision statements together as a new board, I'm reminded, in my research of prior documents, of what our true function is. What I'm about to read was adopted in our February, it was adopted in February of 2010. And our mission at that time, which is our function, basically, the mission of the Mecklenburg County Public Schools is to prepare all students, so that they develop the knowledge and skills to achieve success, and become active citizens who contribute to their communities. And our vision, in February of 2010, which is how we get there, is, was a list of several principles, but the first of those principles is what I want to focus on tonight, and that is, all students will enter school ready to learn. And this is where I want to stop and speak tonight to this, because this is where all citizens in the county can make a difference in our school system. And the single most important thing that caregivers can do to positively impact their child's educational career is read to them, and with them. As adults, we so underestimate the power that we have to ensure our students' performance. You are your child's first teacher, and you will probably be their last, as adult children continue to seek parental guidance in important life decisions. Children need to come to school as pre-K or K students, familiar with letters, words, and sentences in the written word, whether on a screen or in an old-fashioned book. Read to your squirming two-year-old. After a while, they'll stop squirming and be drawn into the wonderful world of reading. Their little minds are so curious, and they will start to ask you, "How do you read?" And you will be able to tell them, and fulfill your role as their first teacher, and instill in them the qualities that they will need to be successful here in our school system. We desperately need to accomplish this first vision statement. All students will come to school ready to learn. Their success in school pivots on this idea and their ability to read. Look for reading resources in your community. We all have access to public libraries. Use them. Meet me at the Upper Rim Ministries Building on Wednesday mornings at 11:00. It's between the Subway and the Medicine Shop in town in South Hill, and I will give you age-appropriate books, and I'll model for you how to read with your child. Every Wednesday, from at 11:00, bring your two- or three-year-old to see me, and I will help you develop your future smart kid. Every child deserves the ability to read. Then they determine their own fate. Let's help them live up to their God-given potential by providing them with a strong foundation in the written word. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. I hope many people take you up on your offer.
Thank you.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yeah, I took this past Friday to start visiting some schools, and I went by Bluestone Senior High and Bluestone Middle School for the first time. And I was impressed by the people that worked there. And I got a tour, and it was a teacher work day, so I got the time to actually speak to some teachers, and I really enjoyed it, and I was really impressed by some of the people we have working for us in this county.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. Mr. Johnson?
Chairman, I'd like to say that, as worker for the town of Flock, State Office, we have to go out to the elementary school every day, so I work hand-in-hand, pretty close with those out there at principal. And I also substitute bus drivers, so I have understanding and feeling of the bus drivers, and what they have to go through and deal with. And I'd like to say that I'm very proud of Mecklenburg County schools, as teachers, as bus drivers, even all the way down to its janitors. I won't stop to forgive the little man on the polling poll as we proceed forward in this school board.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Vice Chairman, Door Garner.
I would like to welcome Nan Alga back to the county. I'd like to thank you for the gifts that you gave us tonight, and I hope everybody has a safe trip home.
Thank you, Ms. Garner. Mr. Honeycutt?
Never a chance not to speak.
The floor is yours.
I had an opportunity Thursday, a week ago, as my first official duty of being on the school board, other than attend meetings and visit our schools on the eastern end of the county, I was able to make it to South Hill Elementary, Parkview Senior High, as well as Parkview Middle. I was welcomed with open arms. I had several teachers make the comment in their tenure there, that they had never been visited by a school board member, which really surprised me. And my opinion to them was, you know, I work for you all. You all don't, you're the ones in there every day. And, you know, you know firsthand what knowledge that the children need, or what tools they need to succeed. I was able to attend the CTE Expo this past week at Parkview Senior High, which was phenomenal, and meet with the students, and just appreciate being a part of a school system that cares, that has a good vision now, and looking forward to the future.
Thank you, Mr. Honeycutt. Mr. Campbell?
I have no comment.
No comment, Mr. Campbell. Mr. Palmer?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I, too, have visited every school in the county. We've even gone as far as to take pictures of things that we saw. And again, as has been stated, I'm very proud of our school system, not necessarily the system, but the people that are in the system. And also, I want to close by commending our coaches, our ball players, and, as has been said, even our bus drivers for transporting our players from school to school. And we've had an outstanding season, and we look forward to having the same for our spring sports.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Mr. Edwards?
If you look back at our past on capital improvements in new schools, if you'll go back about 20 years, we've been doing the same thing every year for 20 years, and I'm just pleased to report that now, we have a school board, and administration, and a Board of Supervisors, and we're all on the same page about moving forward and doing something for our children. This is not a game anymore. This one won't go on the shelf. This one, everybody's serious, and we're moving forward with some really important things. And I think economic development in the future will benefit from this. Our towns will grow, our children will be better educated, and I'm just tickled to death that this is happening, that I have one more shot at being on this board to see this happen. I've waited a long time, but it's here. Time is here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mr. Nichols, you have anything else before we close?
I'm very pleased I, too, have had the opportunity to go to each of the schools since, in the past month, and tour with the architects, and then also, I visited Bluestone's CTE program for their displays, which was very enlightening. We're making some very good progress tonight.